Yeah, but I could talk to Debbie. When she's gone, I could talk to Sean Kennedy.
You moved further from us.
Yeah, I know Penny will make sure I be paid.
Penny just...
No, they just put us up front. For real me. Period.
As long as I deserve it.
I need to be on the side.
I know.
No, close to the rim.
Well, Cass is life.
Close to the rim.
Then you're in the best spot. Because that's the best way to get there, just go through that room.
Yeah, that's a straightaway. Now I have to turn my chair.
These are mine.
Turn my chair. Okay.
Oh, I have it if you need it. I have to... Oh, thank you. No, I have the first copy and it changed a little bit.
I was saying if they really...
I have it. Penny? We're ready? Okay. All right. Thank you all for coming. It looks like we have many distinct... Um, many distinguished guests in the audience. Thank you. I think we need Rosie and Kent.
Rosie and Kent.
I saw Kent, come on up. And Rosie?
Hi, Rosie.
There you go, all right.
Welcome.
Don't they have to swear in first?
Yeah, but I'm gonna have him seated and then we're gonna do this.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna go down the list here. All right. But I wanted to thank everybody for coming. Thank you for being out here and those of you who are here to represent your people who are being sworn in, thank you so much. So first we will start with the oath of office. Our board of trustees, it looks like Rosie and Kent and myself, we will need to take the oath.
Correct.
So where would you like everybody stand?
So why don't we start with you, Penny, first and Jackie Roach is gonna swear you in. So both of you will come up front and we'll, uh, we'll start with the two of you.
All righty. I repeat after me. I, Penny Colleen Edmiston.
I, Penny Colleen Edmiston.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And faithfully discharge the duties about which I am to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, make it official.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Next up, uh, we have, uh, Mr. Crosby and, uh, Mr. Garnett.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Sherman Garnett. I'm president of the Board of the Yelton Unified School District and I'm honored to know Kent. He was a student of mine, believe it or not. And he got his proof.
That's true.
I'm honored to do the open ceremony for Kent's seizure. Kent, if it gets you to raise your right hand. I, Kent Crosby.
I, Kent Crosby.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
In right place, sir.
My nephew, my brother, my buddy, my boy.
Okay, Rosie.
Next up, Rosie and, uh, Mr., uh, Stephen Iñórez. Iñórez.
Iñórez.
Iñórez.
Really Iñórez.
Good evening, everyone. Board of trustees, cabinet. I am Rosie's nephew. I'm very honored to be here to swear in. Raise your right hand, sir. Repeat after me. I, speak your name.
I, Rosie Iñórez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
He is, uh, he's the chief of police at, uh, at Yelton Unified School District. I'm very proud that he's here to give us company and that he can...
All right, well, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Um, our members absent, 1.3. We have no one who is absent today and all members are present, which would include Kent Crosby, Barbara, Dew, myself, Penny Edmiston, Jose Berrios, and Rosie Iñórez. Am I saying it correctly, Rosie? Okay, thank you. Uh, community comments before closed session. Do we have any of those? We do not. Okay. Then in this case, we will enter closed session. Um, do we need a motion to do that? I did notice it on here.
It's a move.
So moved by Jose? I think Barbara moved it first, actually, and then Jose? Okay, so we'll go to closed session. We'll be back in about an hour. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming.
That passed five to zero. At this time, I'd like to report out a few things from closed session. The first thing is, in closed session, the Board of Education took action on an addendum to the co-superintendent's contract correcting and reflecting his salary for a period of ten months. And it was a five to zero vote to correct that mistake on the salary schedule. So, Elvin, switch on. This next one is item two point two. This one, I will turn over to Mr. Coles. If you would like to...
Go ahead and read that.
Okay. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on accepting a contract between VBU HSD and Chantee Milton as the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services commencing on January third of twenty...twenty-two?
Twenty-three, sorry. Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
If not, you're late. So...
Hold on through June thirtieth of twenty-five, and that also was a five to zero vote. Now, I'll turn it to you.
So, Ms. Milton, we are so thrilled that at the next board meeting, you'll be up at the helm over there as our chief business officer. She was interviewed by thirteen people and came out as a unanimous vote, and really, what came out was your transparency, that your transparency and your skill set, you know, for the finances and your leadership skills. And we look forward to a long career and a very successful one in leading the district as the chief business officer. Congratulations.
Thank you, Superintendent Coles. Thank you, Board of Trustees, for having confidence in me. This is an incredible responsibility. It's an incredibly important role in the district, and I am so honored that you guys have chosen me. I look forward to working with my division, Business Services. We have exceptional staff from all the way from our classified to our directors. We have exceptional talent, and I'm just really truly looking forward to dig into working with them. I'm also looking forward to working collaboratively with both with the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Coles, Cabinet, our union partners, and everyone, all of our stakeholders, just to ensure that I am leading and enacting the vision that we have set for the district. Thank you.
All right. In addition, other items in closed session. Item two point one. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on an MOU between VBU HSD and CSEA to conduct a job classification and compensation study. The motion was made by Rosie, seconded by Jose, and again, that was a five-zero vote. Item two point one. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on an MOU between VBU HSD and CSEA to amend the twenty-two-twenty-three school calendar if classified employees are needed to work during winter break, moved by Barbara, seconded by Jose, a five-to-zero vote. Item two point one. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on an MOU between VBU HSD and CSEA to provide a bilingual stipend to classified employees. That motion was made by Barbara, seconded by Jose, and approved five-zero. And finally, agenda item two point one. In closed session, the Board of Education took action on an MOU between VBU HSD and VBT to address class size overages for the twenty-two-twenty-three school year. The district agrees to use the class size ratios for seventh and eighth grade at Lakeview Leadership Academy. This motion was made by Rosie, seconded by Jose, and it passed five to zero. All right. At this time, item three point two. We have no members absent. Three point three. All members are present. And at this time, if I could have our young helper, Nick, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, Nick. Thank you. Good job. This time, I'd like approval of the agenda. Discussion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Passes five to zero. Now, we'll go into the annual organization meeting of the governing board. Four point one. Mr. Coles, can I have you lead that for the appointment of president?
So, every year, required into law is the Board of Education is required to go through an organization meeting. And in this case, our board policy has set forth a succession plan that goes from clerk to vice president, to vice president as the presidency. And so, and it also stipulates what happens if two members, current members, are not elected. And so, the succession would just move up. The last was Penny was the last officer as clerk. The current, the last board president and the last board vice president were not reelected. And so, it leaves a vacancy, and it's still in the appointment process to officially adopt the presidency, which by board policy would be Mr. Evinston. And then, in addition to that, it then leaves a vacancy for the vice president and the clerk to be voted on by the board. So, I think first up for four point one is the presidency.
All right. Do I need to entertain a motion for that? Okay.
So, move that. Penny Esman?
Say yeah.
Discussion. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you. I accept that responsibility. Next, can I entertain a motion for our vice president? Any recommendations or...
So, move, or miss do?
Pardon me? You, okay. Would you like to nominate yourself?
Yeah, I'll nominate.
Okay. Barbara?
Second.
Second by Rosie. Discussion. Okay, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Congratulations, Barbara. At this time, I'll accept the nomination for appointment of clerk.
Nominate Mr. Barrios?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
No oppositions or abstentions? All right. Congratulations, Jose. At this time, we'll make a recommendation appointment to the representative to the county committee. Who's doing that now?
It was, uh...
It was me.
It was him.
Okay.
Did you, you went to those meetings, didn't you?
I nominate Rosie.
Okay. I hear a nomination for Rosie. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposition or...okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. I guess I'll find out what that is, right?
Next, appointment of secretary. This is generally the superintendent who's secretary of the board. I'll entertain a motion. Rosie moved, Jose second. Is that correct? Discussion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? I see none. All right. Congratulations. Carl, you'll be our secretary. Next, four point six are board meeting dates. I know that we shared those meeting dates earlier. They are typically once a month, except when we have budget items. I'll entertain a motion.
So, move. Second.
Okay. I'll say Barbara and Rosie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Five-zero on that one. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. Item five point one, the Victor Valley Union High School District Sunshine Proposals for the twenty-two-twenty-three reopeners with the CSEA Chapter two forty-three.
So, this is the opportunity for our district to, what happens is the public hearing related to the items that we want to sunshine. And so, really, what we have this year is a few items in addition to standard opening, which are related to compensation, standard opening to benefits is just always a standard opening. But the district also has an interest in wanting to look at the evaluation process, because evaluation process is quite cumbersome, you know, for CSEA and being able to kind of look at that, that, you know, would be a fair valuation, you know, and what those timelines may look like. And then, also looking at, you know, work your calendars is a big thing for the district to kind of align with those work your calendars and other aspects of that article would look like as well.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for approving the sunshine list with CSEA.
Actually, what you do is this is, if you...
The hearing to open the hearing?
Well, you've opened the hearing already. If you close the hearing...
Should I entertain any comments for the hearing?
Yeah, you can ask. Yeah, if there's any comments to what's being...
Yeah, I'll open this hearing at five fifty-four and invite anybody who'd like to discuss anything about the sunshine list with CSEA to do so now.
That's a public hearing.
Going once? Twice? Okay. Three times. I'll close this hearing at five fifty-five. All right. Five point two, approval of the VBU HSD, twenty-two-twenty-three sunshine proposals. Carl, do we need to do any discussion on five point two?
Yeah, it's, well, five point two is actually the vote on it, but accepting it.
Okay. With no motion, just a vote?
It's just a vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see no opposition or abstentions. We'll consider that a five-zero vote. Item five point three, the CSEA Chapter two forty-three sunshine proposals, reopeners with VBU HSD.
And so, it's the same thing, you know, actually, we've been collaborating with CSEA on a lot of the same articles as, you know, that we want to open, have some, maybe some nuances in there related to it. You know, one of the things I didn't mention in the ones we want to look at too is just leaves, because the language has changed in the law, so just to make sure that we stay current with the law. But they also have an interest in wanting to look at work your hours, overtime, extra work, and then in addition to compensation and benefits, you know, as well. And so, we're hopefully to get started right away, but this is the legal mechanism that authorizes the board so that we can go to work on negotiations and bring you, bring you some tentative agreements.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or oppositions? Seeing none? Five to zero.
Actually, that was the hearing. Yeah, that one's, just close the hearing.
The reopeners?
The next one should be on the open...
Okay, so now...
You want to close the hearing at five fifty-six?
Let me open it up to the public.
Yeah.
At five fifty-six, I'll open this session up for public discussion if any, and the public would like to give comment about these reopeners. Going once? Twice? Okay. Three times. We will close this public hearing at five fifty-seven. And then, five point four, approval of the sunshine proposals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? This one passes five to zero. Okay. At this time, we'll have public comments. And Mr. Coles, would you like to read the disclaimer for public comments? Or is it you or I?
It's not yet. This one's...
Student Advisory Council.
I just saw the public comments, so I didn't know if that was first.
Me, too.
Okay. So, we'll have student comments. The Superintendent Student Advisory Council report, and the first one we have is Shannon from Goodwill. Shannon, if you'd like to come forward.
So, before Shannon speaks, this is a year we started as a student superintendent advisory council, and Barbara's been on it. I know some of you have also signed up for some other dates to go. It's absolutely the highlight of the day. We meet once a month, and it's a very authentic and vulnerable environment. We have lunch, and so, this last one that we talked about was facilities. We talked a little bit about how we came about and then how they're going to volunteer things. Brett, our Director of Maintenance and Operations, because of the kids, has worked all the way till twenty thirty-eight now. And we're really proud of them, because we're not going to learn anything, you know, as much as we're going to learn from the students from their perspective. So, you're our first speaker, and thank you for volunteering, and let us have it.
Thank you for giving the floor. My name is Shannon Hesslin. I'm from Goodwill High School, and I'm here today to represent the Superintendent Advisory Council. The Advisory Council is made up of two students from each school in our district, except for Goodwill, which just has one, which is me. We meet once a month to discuss the problems that we found in our schools, and even though we've only met twice so far, we've found that we actually have a few issues in common. One of our highest priorities that we have in common and that we wanted to present today are the problems that we have with the bathrooms. At Goodwill, there's only one in each classroom, which makes it difficult when multiple students have to use the restroom at the same time. And most of the other schools, a lot of the bathrooms that they do with, that they do have, are locked. So, when students need to use the restroom, they have to walk across their entire campus to find a restroom that isn't locked, and which causes them to be late for their classes. These issues are the top of our priority list, these issues are the top of our list because of how important it is to have easy access to a bathroom that doesn't impede their education by causing them to be late. Another high priority that we have are the issues with the physical states of some of our campuses. What I mean by that is the cracks in the grounds, which kids trip over and can cause them to get hurt, the lack of upkeep in the grass fields, which turns to mud, and kids can get stuck or slip in them, and the lack of proper drainage on some of the campuses, which causes puddles to build up when it rains. The last thing I wanted to mention was all the trash in our schools. A few of the other students mentioned that at their campuses, they don't have enough janitors to keep their schools properly clean. And since we've only met twice, and our second time was just yesterday, there hasn't been too many things that we've been able to just discuss just yet, and so, we haven't had enough time to properly find all the issues. And so, hopefully, you know, with time, we can find more and work to develop solutions to fix these issues. And I just wanted to thank all of you for allowing me to speak today to represent the students' perspective of things on our campuses.
Thank you.
You know, one of the things I know that the board, you guys value is the democratic process of learning from students' perspectives, and that's really what it's about, is learning from their perspective and for us to keep learning from them, and then us to, but accountability piece is that every month, we couldn't come back and say, here's the things that we started to do, based on the feedback that they've given us. And so, I'm really proud of the group. There's about fifteen of them, and let me tell you one thing, they are not shy at all. And so, but it's also a good valuable lesson in the democratic process and what this looks like. So, I'm really proud of you. Great job, Shannon.
Now, Shannon is, Shannon, are you leaving us soon? Are you graduating soon or...
Yeah, I have Goodwill, we graduate, our graduation's in May, and I'm probably going to finish my work before that, so I might be done either January or February, so...
Good job. Congratulations on your early graduation, and thank you for being the voice of students from the Superintendent Advisory Council to help us understand issues from your point of view. We're lucky we've had Patrick, who's also done the same thing, but thank you both. Next, we'll go to the students who've come here from different sites. We'll start with university prep and Nicole.
Okay, so, I'm just going to be talking about the events and things we're doing at school. So, we have Friday the thir-, sorry. Friday the thirteenth, we have Gene Day, and then Monday the sixteenth, we have No School.
Good job, Lloyd.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry. Friday the twentieth, we have Spanish dance, and Friday the twenty-seventh, we have a Gene Day for the cuts of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Heather? Heather? Did you say who?
She came late.
Well, do we want to, Nicole, can you come up so we can shake your hand and tell you thank you for coming, visit us? While she's doing that, if we could have Victor High School, Karina, come up?
My name is Karina Martinez, and I am the Executive President of VBHS ASB. With me is Hazel Dominguez, our Executive Vice President. VBHS was represented at the Christmas parade. Our band, cheer team, and ROTC groups marched as a unit to represent our Jack Rabbit pride of the high desert. Our award-winning theater program led by Ms. Nocera recently held their night on Broadway, winner of winter production, which included excerpts from many Broadway musicals. The last night of the show is always a lumineous... The last night of the show is always alumni night, where BBHS theater alumni are able to come and perform with the current theater students. It's always an amazing show. ASB held a canned food drive prior to Thanksgiving event, Thanksgiving break, which brought in over 1,000 canned goods. It was a run as a competition between third period classes with a winning class receiving a pizza party.
Winter sports are off to a good start with top finishes for our boys and girls basketball teams, boys and girls soccer teams, and continued wins for our 10-time DSL winning wrestling program. Our PLUS program recently began an athlete of the week recognition program to highlight our key athletes each week. Tomorrow, we are holding our second annual Winter Wonderland Club Festival, where we will have games, entertainment, activities, and multiple food trucks for students and staff to participate in. Each club on campus, as well as our sports programs, have created games and activities. We are looking forward to another amazing festival. Coming up in the new year, our mental health clinician, Amber Macy, will be starting two therapy groups on campus that will be running for eight weeks. The groups cover grief and loss and healthy relationships. It is an excellent opportunity for our students to work through some of the challenges in their lives. Thank you and have a good evening.
And if I could have Hook come up, and we'll recognize you as soon as you have the podium? Thank you very much. Good job. Thank you for coming. Victor and Kiara from Hook?
Good to see you again.
Good afternoon, Victor Valley Union High School Board and Staff members. My name is Victor Jorge.
And I am Kiara Henry. And we are both students attending Hook Junior High. From October up to December, we've had many events that were tons of fun. Our Halloween dance was wonderful with a lot of students, with all the, all the students that showed up. We had 220 tickets sold for the dance, and the students loved it.
November wasn't as eventful as the rest of our months, but we still had a good amount of activities on our campus. We had our first quarter honor roll, and we had over 300 people make it to honor roll.
We gave students who had a three, we gave students who had a 3.0 pizza, we gave students who had a 3.5 pizza and chips, and we gave students who had a 4.0 pizza, chips, and soda. They all enjoyed their pizza and had a fun time.
In addition, we had multiple days to wear certain colors for specific days, like wearing orange for unity day, wearing blue for kindness day, and a day to check in for wearing anti-bullying bracelets and badges. It was nice to show awareness and not be in dress code.
We had our geography bee on the 1st of December. Everyone who qualified did great, and the winner, the winner was an eighth grader who was Jimmy Escobar.
Our winter dance was terrific. We had around 150 students show up, and our students and staff had so much fun dancing to Christmas songs.
We started our 12 Days of Holiday Giving on December 1st, and it ends tomorrow on the 16th. It's a kindness project where students donate basic necessities to homeless shelters, like toothbrushes, socks, and shampoo. Our best day had over 100 people donate to wear sweatpants, which is around 10% of our campus. Even on our lowest days of people donating, we had many people at our school participate in those days. The people who donated truly are helping our community out.
Our boys volleyball team had their finals game yesterday in our gym, where they won. They had a 7-1 record this season, almost going undefeated, and for winning finals in their division, they got a banner with their names on it and medals. We cannot wait to hang up, hang up the banner in the Marla Shackleford Gym, and we wait to see what other sports will bring home.
We also will have a dodgeball tournament in January, which will be lots of fun.
We are looking forward to what our second semester will have in store for us and what will happen in the new year.
Thank you for your time and have an amazing but a stunning rest of your day.
If we could have Trinity from Sims come up?
My name is Trinity, and I am executive vice president at Sims.
And I'm Aleah Hobson, class vice president.
First, I want to start off with our tailgate and Monster Mash. ASB sponsored a tailgate for volleyball and had their annual Monster Mash celebration. Hundreds of students attended the tailgate and Monster Mash, where clubs and vendors sold food, and a scary maze was designed by our anime and drama club on campus. Next, we had our Ironman volleyball. Males from the grades nine through 12 competed in a volleyball tournament as a fundraiser for the class of 2024. The senior boys won the tournament, and then, and then they competed against our staff team. Ms. Miles did a play-by-play commentary, and the staff team won the very tight match.
We just recently had our 12 Days of Holiday Fun. ASB sponsored their annual 12 Days of Holiday Fun, where students were allowed to dress up based on spirit days. Ms. Miles gave out hot chocolate daily, and this helped ease the tension of finals. For athletics, cross-country qualified for CIF, and junior Mia Villa was awarded league MVP. Basketball and soccer teams have participated in tournaments and are now getting ready, ready for the regular seasons.
Next, we have our student recognition. Certificates and pins have been going out each month to recognize student of the month. Teachers are able to recognize one student from each class period based on our site expectations, our Cougar pride, preparation, respect, integrity, determination, and engagement. We have upcoming events soon. January 10th, we'll have our tailgate for basketball. We'll have our winter rally, January 20th, and our winter formal, January 21st. And lastly, our Mr. Cougar, February 10th. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Ketsi Velazquez. I am the ASBE board president of Adelanto.
And I'm Michael Huerta, I'm the vice president E board at Adelanto High School. For Halloween, we had our second annual trick-or-treat celebration, which was executed perfectly. Our campus was filled with joyful children as they participated in an array of games and trick-or-treated in a safe environment. Our on-campus preschool has started for three days a week, and for two and a half hours, community kids can come in and have a safe place to learn. For Dia de los Muertos, our Ola Club, otherwise known as the organization de Latino Americanos, is an excellent club offered here at Adelanto High School, where students are given the opportunity to learn more about the Latinx culture. We had our production of Barefoot in the Park from our drama club, and also we had our winter concert from our music club.
Next is athletics. We have our basketball season. Basketball season has returned once again at Adelanto High School. After spending countless hours conditioning and preparing for the season that would arise, our basketball team is now fully prepared to partake in an excellent season that is filled with victories and trams, and so is our soccer team and our wrestling team. Next, we have the senior ornament decorating to commemorate the commencement of the holiday season. Our seniors were invited to partake in an event where they could spend time with their fellow peers, decorating ornaments that would be used to decorate a tree that would participate in our Christmas tree decorating contest. Next is freshmen and their sweet grades. On this particular day, many of our freshman students were awarded with a bag of treats for their sweet grades. Although the transition from middle to high school may be difficult to grow accustomed to, these students have displayed their ability to succeed within a nude environment. Next is our, coming up is our ASB Winter Fest. Adelanto High School will be hosting its first annual Winter Fest on the 14th of January as an additional opportunity for our students to make an everlasting memory alongside with their friends. The theme of this occasion will take place in the dark, allowing the well-equipped black lights to capture the vivid colors and hues that radiate from our students.
Thank you.
I have a question. I have a, I have a question. Do your lights work?
Oh, yeah, they do.
I told you to turn them on.
There we go.
Energy.
See, I told you. You look very flashy. Good job. You look flashy.
Nice job.
Next, we'll have Lakeview Leadership Academy, and Helen is representing her side.
My name is Helen Frias, and I am the ASB president at Lakeview Leadership Academy. We now have both a junior high and high school cheer team coached by Ms. Thomas and Ms. Garcia, and they are now in the process of getting uniforms. They will be performing at home games and rallies in the future. We had several teachers apply for the Rotary Club grants, and Ms. Gemma and Ms. Negrete both received grants. We held our first report card night on October 26th, where parents were able to pick up their students' report cards and meet with their child's, with their child's teacher to discuss grades and set appointments. On the same night, our staff was trained in ALIS procedures. Every student who is taking the AP US History and AP English and Composition is registered to take the AP exam. Rescue Generation and Amazing Grace Resource Centers are on campus, making a difference with our students. Class of 2020, class of 2024 began their snack bars and home, at home gains at, at the end of October, and are raising money for prom and grad night costs for next year. November 1st, our Avid students took a college tour of San Diego State University, and November 3rd, our high school cross-country team ran at the league finals at VVC. November 7th, UC Irvine gave a presentation to our students. High school ASB hosted a Thanksgiving basket donation drive to collect items to make baskets for Lakeview families in need. The baskets were handed out to families on November 17th and 18th. November 9th, the senior class of 2023 hosted a Friendsgiving Senior Dinner at Townsend and previewed a location as a potential prom venue. On November 12th, Avid students had the opportunity to attend a UCLA football game and college fair, and we had our Spirit Week from November 14th through November 18th. ASB Family Night was November 16th, where both junior high and high school ASB gathered with their families to watch movies, play games, paint pumpkins, and just come together as one. At their Thanksgiving break, our high school boys' basketball team had their first game of the season at Riverside Prep on, on November 28th. The College and Career Center hosted presentations from University of Redlands, UTI, and Cal Poly during November. There was also another financial aid workshop offered to seniors, as well as a college trip to CSUSB for the seniors. Our students had the opportunity in October to take the ASWAP, and in November, they had an interpretation workshop. On December 1st, Avid students attended a college tour for UCLA. On December 7th, ASB hosted our first Club Rush event during lunches. December 8th, our 10th grade students took a field trip to the Museum of Tolerance. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak on behalf of Lakeview Leadership Academy.
So my name is Ella Rivas, and this is my good friend, Jayla Daniel, and we are representing Options for Youth, Victorville ASB Group. This semester, our Mustangs have been busy in community events such as community cleanup days, the Victorville Fall Festival, trunk-or-treat, sock drives, canned food drives for the Victor Valley Rescue Mission, the Hasperia Tree Lighting, and most recently, the Kiwanis Victorville Christmas Parade. We had 18 students participate the day of the parade, but all of our ASB students at each of our locations created all the decorations used for this parade float. Our students were excited and had a lot of fun bringing cheer to all the community members that came out to the parade. Our next event will be helping on December 17th at the Toys for Tots event in Victorville. At this event, our staff and students will be volunteering to wrap Christmas gifts that will be handed out on December 20th at the Holiday Carnival event at the Cal Help Office in Apple Valley for the angel tree recipients.
Along with all the community events, our students have been continuing career and education exploration. We have been attending several community-focused events, such as the HDES Summit at the VVC and the VVC Public Summit, and our CPC team with their Virtual Reality Career Exploration headsets at each location. College tours have also been very popular this semester. We have visited a variety of UCs, CSUs, and VVC to help students see the differences in the campuses and the campus life. Our seniors had the opportunity and the support to fill out their FAFSA forms with the workshops and individual support from our student counselors. We are so proud to say that several Mustangs were able to apply to several USC's and CSUs, waiting now to see what our Mustangs decide and what campuses they choose to attend. As always, we continue to celebrate each of our graduates as they complete that last unit, each location in their own way. Winter graduation is almost here, and we will be held on January 13th at 6:00 PM at High Desert Church in Victor Valley. We will be hosting a senior breakfast ceremony to hand out caps, downs, tickets, and a final run-through of all the senior events that are still available for our students at the end of the school year. We are expecting about 82 students to rock across the stage during the winter ceremony. Thank you for your time.
And I'd like to invite up a Silverado Hawk, if we could have Cheyenne come up and tell us the event.
Thanks, sweetheart.
Hi, Cheyenne.
Hi, thank you for coming.
I am the ASB representative for Silverado. You may call me Avery. On October 22nd, we have hosted our evening honor roll event with our, with over 400 students earning at least 3.0 or higher in the spring of 2022 semester. We also introduced brand-new letterman patches for all our top 10 ranking juniors and seniors, including 34 seniors that were honored for maintaining of 4.0 or higher during the first three years of high school, followed by Donuts with Dads that happened October 27th, where fathers got to spend time and catch up with their kid, with their children in this baseball-themed event. And for us to remember the devastating news of Richard Reed, our beloved son, brother and friend, may he rest in peace as our beloved number nine football player. November 1st, we held our first, our, no, we held our FAFSA event sponsored by VVC, with many attending and enjoying many games and prizes. with many attending and enjoying many games and prizes. In later November, we held, uh, an audition. We held, uh, auditions for our Hawk Scott Talent on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, with many talented students auditioning. On the week of December ninth, we had our many staff and teachers lined up on both sides of the, uh, of the entrance gate, clapping and cheering on the students that had, that had entered with elbow bumps and high fives. Many confused and surprised, some danced with confidence, and others tried to avoid it. A good friend of mine, uh, had expressed their gratitude, saying it gave her good confidence boost. We are more than excited to watch this community grow next month. On the ninth of December was the day of our Hawk Scott Talent, our ASB class compete, competition, along with single, uh, acts having fi- five-plus top, like, five more plus-top talent, uh, awards given. This week, we have an art show being showcased by our art department, along with a door decor contest in ending the bitter, cold year of twenty-twenty-two with a well-deserved winter break. Have a safe and wonderful winter.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheyenne. Thank you for coming.
Great job.
That wraps up our student reports, and I'd just like to invite students, if you'd like to stay, you may. But if you'd also, if you need to go, I know you have studies. This ends the portion where our students are reporting, so it's up to you if you'd like to stay or if you need to leave. We understand. At this time, we'll go to six point three. Carl, if you could read the guidelines for public comment.
Sure. That's it, everyone's leaving? We've got a budget presentation. Oh, wow. Have a good evening, everyone.
Well, they are our budget.
That's it. Uh, if you wish to address the board on any topic, including any item on the agenda, please submit your comments to the board president by completing a request to address the board card prior to the meeting and submitting it to the assistant to the superintendent. The president will recognize those who desire to speak either during the public comment section of the agenda or before the particular agenda item. Each speaker should move quickly to the microphone and announce your name before beginning your presentation. Meetings are taped for later transcription. Each speaker is allocated a maximum of three minutes. The president may choose to limit each topic to ten, no more than twenty minutes, if substantial numbers of speakers wish to address the board on one topic. Testimony should be brief and to the point. Speakers should not repeat testimony already presented. Board action may not legally be taken on any item not specifically listed on the agenda. The board may ask that such items be placed on the next agenda for consideration. Testimony is not protected from damage claims or slander. Public charges or allegations may result in legal action brought by those individuals. The board values constructive community comments and suggestions. It welcomes your participation in the democratic process.
Okay, thank you. We have one public comment, and I apologize, Stephanie, I'm not sure of the last name. Wilk?
Wilson.
Wilson. Wilson.
Oh.
I am here because I am sure, um, esteemed board, you are well aware that there will be a historic change tomorrow. The district will be different. For multiple decades, Jackie Rocha has been the core part of VVU HSD. Before we had mental health clinicians, some of us had Jackie Rocha. Um, Jackie's sense of positivity and pragmatism has carried many of us through very tough times and steadied our exuberance in the, in the best of them. When you're really having a high time, she says, it's okay, it'll even out. Examples of her pragmatism include frequent phrases like, "It'll be okay." "It will all work out." "Don't worry, kids come in September and leave in June." "Believe me, next year, it'll just be the way we do it. It's okay." "We've opened schools, we've closed schools, we've dealt with things, and every time, in our lowest lows, Jackie smiled and said, 'Just do what you do. Make a list first.'" The easiest way for me to, to explain, when I was working as a district gate coordinator, what indirect costs were, I just thought, what does Jackie do? You get the copiers running at every site. You maintain every single thing. You work out all the little things between every other person. You make sure everything's running, you make sure everything's going, you make sure every person feels valued. You put people over program, but you make sure the programs work. I want you to, I know that you can't take action in any way, but the world needs to recognize that the child that graded her daddy's math papers and learned how to support teachers has done it for multiple decades. And I just want to say thank you, Jackie Rocha.
That's gonna be missed. All right, at this time, seven point one. Mike, if you'd like to come and give the VVTA report?
Hello, hello. Good evening, board. Uh, welcome Kent Crosby and Rosie Hinoj to the Victor Valley Union High School District Board of Trustees. VVTA's hope is that we can continue to work with the board for the betterment of all our students and community at large. My name is Mike Mayo, and I am Victor Valley Teachers Association President. Our membership is over four hundred eighty members strong, and I am privileged to speak on their behalf. Um, and also, I want to thank, uh, some of the board and cabinet members for supporting VVTA and wearing red today. I really appreciate it. Membership appreciates your support. Thank you to the district for inviting me to the California School Board Association Conference. I'd like to share a relevant VVTA bylaw with you that notes one of VVTA's purposes. It's to encourage cooperation and communication between the profession and the community. My first session at CSBA, it was titled Community Engagement Initiative. It taught me that our school district is an official member of this, and most school districts are not. I honestly was unaware until I got in the meeting and I saw, hey, that's our logo. And so I thought that was strange. I was unaware. The session had me considering what a district moving toward culturally and linguistically responsive community engagement looks like. And when we make decisions as a district, how are we actually engaging with our community? Our parents, our guardians, our staff, our students. Much of this begins with authentic relationships. And kind of what was mentioned before, people over program, I like what was said there. Good on you, Jackie. If we cannot build powerful, authentic relationships with each other and our community, we are likely to fail. My hope is this idea follows us in our engagement with one another and movement towards a community school building from bottom up and led by all of us. Speaking of which, uh, thank you, uh, Mike Wilford. Wilford, um, apparently they're pushing through for the grant right now, at least for planning stages, so I'm really looking forward to that. I know it's going to be a really long marathon on community schools, but we've got to get it started somewhere, and so I'm glad we're doing it now, and so we're going to get it done. Another important session was called Equity Leadership. On a very basic level, equality means giving all students what they need when they need it. In the meeting, they shared a cartoon with a leader at a lectern, kind of like this, shouting at an adoring crowd who, uh, and then yells out, "Who wants change?" And nearly everyone raises their hands, because they see that there are issues, they want to address those issues. The leader then asks, "Who wants to change?" No one raises a hand. The leader then asks, "Who wants to lead the change?", and the crowd exits. And, uh, some of you may have already seen this, and the cartoon, I'm not doing it much justice, but there's a, it's a cartoon that does it, and so, uh, it just kind of gets you an idea of what happens oftentimes when we're, we're trying to do stuff, and that is including like the community schools, because I know I'm pushing that pretty hard. We need to think carefully about the decisions we make if we are to educate the whole child, and the actions we take should be made with a lens of equity, an attempt to give all students what they need when they need it. Doing so would make our jobs easier, because students would be less concerned with just surviving and more likely to concern themselves with a rigorous and diverse education. All right. Now, some interesting stuff. VVTA's organizing team, they threw one heck of an incredible holiday party last night. We had around two hundred forty of you had signed up to attend. How many showed up, I don't remember, but we had to have at least about two hundreds, I'm sure of that. If not, uh, maybe I was off by hearing all the screams. All right. Um, I want to thank specifically organizing chair of VVTA, Tracy Miles. We also have others on there, PJ Ehart, Bonnie Vigil, and everyone else who helped out and actually attended. It was one heck of a party, one of our biggest ones, probably. And thank you, Dr. Yi, for attending our VVTA Representative Council this month. That was unusual. We don't normally have, uh, people from cabinet or anything coming to our rep council meetings, and she, and she's the one who wanted to reach out to us, and so I invited her, and she was there. She discussed FEV tutoring. Uh, some members shared the benefits of using it. Uh, some have used it before, uh, and then others feel that there are some things that could be improved, and those are conversations we can have later about that. Um, and then thank you again, uh, for allowing us to sign up for Good Teaching Conference. Uh, the, the Good Teaching Conference, we have several members, and many, even at Silverado, I know for sure, I spoke to one site rep there, who said that of the seven newer teachers, five of them had already signed up. And that's great, because it's, it's just good teaching, good practices, things that they can use immediately in the classroom. And it's also good for some of us older teachers, too. I need to thank VVTA's LGBTQ-plus liaison, Jennifer Thompson, uh, Superintendent Carl Coles, and every principal in our district. It was just this morning, they granted us an audience during the principals' meeting. The information Jennifer shared will be hopefully, well, it will hopefully lead to a closer relationship between our association and the district in trying to help all students get the help they need when they need it. And thank you, Mr. Coles, for moving forward and signing the MOU. And now they just heard it announced. I know you signed it, so that's great. I knew I had. I just didn't know if you got into it yet. You had a busy day. For Lakeview Leadership Academy student overages, we appreciate your listening and taking action to address the issue. Um, also, let's see. Thank you for inviting me and actually CSCA for inviting the associations to the CBO interviews. That was awfully nice. The first time I've ever sat in on an interview. I didn't realize we'd have thirteen people there, but that's, it, it's a good way to kind of scare people, and if they can't take that, then they don't belong here anyway. And sorry, I shouldn't say that. Okay, anyway, um, I am looking forward to the HR interviews taking place in January. Uh, Mr. Coles, Dr. Yi, I have had conversations with both of you. To address the missed days for students at Cobalt Institute of Math and Science, we will continue to hope that the waiver is granted. We know that that's the best way to have it resolved. If it's not, we understand that there's probably going to have to be another MOU in place uh, to deal with potential, uh, changes as far as instructional time. Uh, Dr. Yi, now, I would have addressed this with you personally, however, all this is kind of coming down all at once. We realized that there was yet another slowdown on Aries, so. I know we have discussed the grading deadline in the past, but our context has changed regarding the deadline for grades. This week, we have encountered problems with Chromebooks for large portions of the day and the following two days, including this one. Aries has either not been functioning correctly for members and/or the system has been moving slower than a, than a student when you ask a student to actually take a seat. If we could please extend the deadline to report grades, VVTA would really appreciate that. Um, and there's one more thing I do need to bring up specifically for retirees. Uh, uh, we have retirees even back, uh, twenty-twenty-one. I know I've addressed this before, um, and I've, I know I've spoken to Mr. Coles about it, and I'm just hoping that that gets resolved, or at least some communications are definitely taking place with those retirees from twenty-twenty-one who are being affected by the retroactive salary increase that we had a five percent back then. Yeah, that was one at five percent. Last one was seven percent. Okay. Just trying to remember. All right, um, I would like to also say farewell to Jackie, but I can't ever even get close to what Stephanie Wilson just did, so I'll just leave it at that. Uh, and you've been a real help. If, if I ever, if you ever really needed to know kind of what has to get done during a board meeting, Jackie was the person you could always go to, and it was always really helpful. I want to say good night to everyone, and take some time, set aside the work for a little while, and just relax. And enjoy your breaks, celebrate whatever holiday you might be celebrating, if you celebrate any holidays. If not, then just go ahead, go for a hike, go walk, whatever you want to do. But everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Tanya, would you like to give us the CSCA report? Welcome back.
Good evening, board, new board members. I've been gone for a couple months. I'm back, so I'm going to be very, very brief tonight. Um, I've spent a little time in the district. Um, I'm not quite back to work, um, but I spent the last two weeks. I was invited also to the CBO interviews. Congratulations, Shante. And I look forward to also sitting on the HR interviews, um, coming up. Um, we are seeing some positive changes, but we still have a lot of ongoing issues that need to be worked out. Um, we did have, um, a good negotiation session, and we really appreciate Mr. Coles being willing to work with us. We closed a lot of things that we've been even bargaining from, since two thousand nineteen. So we are very grateful. We're, we see, we're optimistic. We see good things happening, so I do want to put that out there. We're pleased with the progress. Look forward to continuing into the new year. For twenty-twenty-three, what CSCA is focusing on is more consistency, streamlined processes throughout sites and management. And we're just interested in working with the district. We're pleased with the changes we see. Like I said, I'm going to keep it brief tonight, and I look forward to seeing you guys in twenty-twenty.
All right. I just wanted to explain briefly, the last couple meetings we tried, and it's been very successful. Thank you, Mr. Coles, for suggesting. We have a different format than what you might be used to. We have more items on the consent agenda, and those things we approve with one fell swoop. But board members, please feel free, if there's anything that you feel that you need to pull and you'd like more consideration or more discussion, we can do that. We meet ahead of time with our superintendent, so we ask questions. He keeps us informed all throughout the process, so often we may have already had our questions answered. And then we'll move on to the action items. So you might see some of this carries, uh, goes pretty quickly, but then there are times I just don't want you to hesitate if there's anything you want to pull, and we can discuss further. So at this time, we have consent items, eight point one, all the way to eight point thirty.
I don't, I don't want to pull anything, but there's a, a couple of clarifying questions I'd like to ask. I'd like three, well, four, four things.
Let me just clarify then our procedure. Do we want to pull those to discuss them, or do we want to?
Let me just pull them and just have them separate. That way, it's just clean, and we can get your questions answered.
Okay. So, Jose, which items do you want to discuss further?
Oh, it was just eight twelve. Simple question. Is the furniture being, taken from CEC being repurposed?
Hold on, I'm just going to take the list first. In addition to eight twelve, which other things?
Eight twelve, and then a question on, well, it's eight twenty-one and eight twenty-two. It's like a combination question.
Okay.
All right. And then eight twenty-six, just a simple question on that one.
Okay. Any other items from other board members? Okay, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve everything eight point one through eight point thirty and pulling eight point twelve, eight point twenty-one, eight point twenty-two, and eight point twenty-six.
So moved.
Rosie, and Patrick, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see no oppositions or abstentions, so now we'll move to eight point twelve.
Good, Debbie. Is he kind of asked that?
Um, so, um, basically, we, as we work through the, um, old Cobalt, and we get that school ready for opening next year, that has been used as somewhat of a storage facility, and we have some storage items over there. And some of the items that we had were some workstations. Those workstations were originally purchased for Goodwill to move over there. And, um, those workstations will be disassembled and moved and reassembled at locations where they're needed at this time. Four of them will go to central enrollment, where they have some really old equipment there. It's going to be obsoleted. And then two of those workstations are going to be going over to Lakeview. And again, we have some older equipment out there, and so that's what's going on with this particular item.
So it's going to be used?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
We have places in the district where there's furniture that's no longer being used, and it's sitting outside just deteriorating.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly right. Thank you.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve eight point twelve.
So moved.
Okay, I'll take the say moved, and Patrick seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any oppositions or objections? Okay, that has passed five point zero. I'll now. I'll now move to 8.21.
Okay, now, 8.21 and 8.22 are like a combination here, because they're both dealing with district psychologists. They're both for one semester, and there's, well, about a $40,000 difference in the cost. And if I read it right, they're both going to be virtual, so everything's pretty consistent except for the amount we're paying.
So each school psychologist, depending on the company and their experiences and so forth, their rates differ because of that? So right now, there is a need for school psychologists, as we have two out currently.
And we can only find $157,000 psychologist, huh? Well, hey, it's a legitimate question, okay?
It is a difficult position.
$40,000, we could hire a third, almost. All right. That's fine, that's just what I wanted to know.
Okay, since you said they.
I told you it's a simple question.
You said they were related, I'll bundle those two together.
That's fine.
And at this time, I'll accept a motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. At this time, any discussion, further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or objections? Okay. Next is 8.26.
Okay, so another simple question, okay, this program, you know, personal finance and entrepreneurship, great, it's about time that we start doing this sort of thing. They used to do this back in the 80s, remember, Mr. Crosby, everybody had to take a class on how to buy a refrigerator, how to buy a car, et cetera, et cetera. It seemed silly at the time, but the older I got, the more practical it got. All right. Now, is this course going to be offered to all the sites? Because the description just specifies, I think, one site or two sites.
It's offer, it can be offered at all the sites, so usually that's part of our process, is every school sites. It is available if the school site determines that it's a need, so yes.
Be simple, just offer it as part of the econ curriculum, I'm sorry, Stephanie, but just another thing to take care of, but that's.
It's one of the things.
Financial literacy, people are really bad at, adults, too.
One of the things that they're talking about is changing the curriculum a little bit in adding finance and entrepreneurial, because that's something that students are asking for.
Absolutely. There is definitely a need, we are very happy that this came forward, and thank you for approving this, and Mr. Ted Stewart is excited to teach it.
There's bills now for it, so you're going to be, you're going to see those bills come up for that.
Okay, any further discussion for 8.26? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I saw no opposition or objections. All right, moving on to action items, 9.1, the certificated personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item 9.2, classified personnel report.
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Call for vote?
Aye.
Any opposition? 9.3, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
The questions, my question was answered in a closed session.
So yeah, so Ms. Dill will remain on, that's the plan, you know, with Shante coming as a new CBO, providing continued mentorship, too, phasing out into, you know, some coaching roles, you know, into the spring, but then also in addition, even though Shante's the CBO, we still need to backfill that position, you know, a lot of the technical positions that come with the director position, so having two people in this role still continues to be absolutely essential. And it would have already been budgeted costs within the district if we would have had two people anyway, so there's not an additional fee, and we might as well take advantage of Mrs. Dill and all her expertise as long as we can, before she heads off to the rivers and streams to fish.
Thank you so much.
To the last minute.
All right, I'd like to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I see no opposition. Motion passed 5 to 0. Item 9.4.
So moved, second.
Okay, moved by Rosie, seconded by Jose. Discussion?
One of the things that I did talk to the superintendent about this, and to find out what this was, and it seems that you're collecting data, right?
The data collection tool.
Sure. We have an opportunity, as part of our OCR agreement, really is to look at an MTSS, and being able to disaggregate our data to provide that tiered systems of support. We do have Mr. Williford here, he'd like to share a little bit about some of the data that we've seen, some very positive trends with regards to discipline. Remember, with OCR agreement, it was about the disparities between the way in which our African-American students were disciplined. These are some of the work that we're putting into place, and this, if the board should approve, will help support us with the data piece of it.
Mr. Riley, can you, do you have that presentation, Mr. Riley?
Yeah, I talked to him, too, and I talked to you when I was coming in, and you were talking about it was the ability to collect data.
Correct.
Is that, is that what this group is?
Yes, so it's actually not a group, it's actually a program. It's going to help be able to discern our data, because Ares is a good data system as far as collection, but you can't drill down to help support for intervention and supports. So a few, next slide, please. So this here is kind of our current data, you can see that currently we have, at the end of November, December's of course not over yet, we have roughly 436 suspensions this year, and then that's actually comparative, you see the yellow column there, we had 1,743 suspensions last year. So if you just kind of did just the normal math on that, we're actually on track to do about 800 to about 900 suspensions compared to, this year compared to last year, so we're going in the right direction. Our reduction in suspensions is going in the right direction. Next slide, please. This here is just the referral data, and this is not suspension, a referral data. It's comparing data from 2021, '22 to our current 2022, '23 data, and if you see there, the targets that are green, those are the areas that we're actually having reductions in referrals for certain ed code violations. So you can see, for example, in our first ed code violation there, 491A1, which usually fights or physical aggression, across the board, you can kind of see in the green, we can go in the right direction, a lot of our areas. But if you look in that seventh grade, for example, there's 40 more referrals in seventh grade this year than last year for fights. So what SHAPE is going to be able to do is, when we put these referrals into the system, we can actually now drill down deeper to find out who's fighting, when they're fighting, what time of the day they're fighting at, is there some sort of underlying root cause because of that fight? So it's going to help us drill down more and help support, of course, also for office civil rights movement, as well as our certificate disproportionality. Next slide, please. So again, just more data for you regarding the areas that we are showing improvement in. The greens, again, are those positive areas, but again, the non-colors are actually areas where we have growth, and we need to look at that a little bit deeper. You can see here in our K violations, we have 225 K violations over years past. Some of that is due to past data analysis things that we used to do in this district as practices, but again, that we want to figure out why. How can we support those students who are having these K violations to make sure we could drill down and find the right interventions for them, to help support not just the students, but also the staffs as well, so we can get the right interventions, the right things in place, so that our staffs are feeling that they're being supported. So we want to make sure we drill down deeper on that. Next slide, please. Again, some more areas here, again, just more areas of positive, those green areas are, again, reductions, again, in areas, so that way you see where we're showing some growth. Next slide, please. Again, just more ed code violation components in those areas of growth, again, going in the right directions. And then I think this is the last slide, next slide, please. And just the overall end of the year number, or end of the quarter numbers. So again, this SHAPE system will help us be able to segregate that data even better to make sure we're doing interventions properly, and also this contract is for the remainder of this year and next year, it's a year and a half contract, it's not just for the remainder of this year, so it's a year and a half contract, so that's what I have for you regarding SHAPE.
So it's a year and a half contract?
Correct. Correct.
Any questions?
Nope, that was good.
Thank you, Mr. Williford. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carl, sorry, judge, I didn't do it that way, I'm going to fix that for 9.5. So 9.5 is purchase of OMAX, and I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Yi to speak to this.
Go ahead, and so you'll still do a motion, and then a motion in the second, and then they can, she'll be.
So I'll entertain a motion for 9.5.
So moved, second.
All right, so we are very excited that we are purchasing, it is a very expensive water jet, but not as familiar necessarily in this area, but I have learned that being, making sure that all of our students have the opportunity to actually have industry standards kinds of machines, and I know that Ms. Edmiston, we spent all day together, and we're able to actually look at some of the things that we have in our CTA program. So this water jet will be supporting our aviation pathway at Victor, and it is a single source item, therefore didn't require the bidding that generally we would need to do because it does go over the bid limit. So we are excited that our students get to kind of work on these kinds of things, and build, and prepare, you know, as they go out into the world and have those experiences, that's going to get them a really, really good job and really, really good pay.
Questions?
Well, it's like you mentioned, yes, students that want to work at General Atomics on the drones and things like that, this sort of stuff is necessary. Now, my question is, and I hope it's a good answer, once the students start getting proficient at that, will they be able to use, basically do services for us? Because sometimes maybe, you know, machining for maintenance, or transportation, or something like that, some of these things can be done by a, you know, a good, I won't say young, but young, a young person who's experienced with this equipment could do it just as good as somebody that's going to charge a district $3,000, $4,000, $5,000. So I think that's another, another good possibility. The more that we can utilize these skills that these students are getting, they can save us a bunch of money, and that's a practical thing, because that's the hard thing about things like that, you need practice, they need to practice. So if they can practice, hey, if they can practice doing stuff for us, it's a win-win.
Absolutely. Similar to the automotive department, I think when we were there, I think the student was working on fixing a tire for a support staff, so definitely.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? All right, that passes 5 to 0. Item 9.6, the annual five-year developer fee.
So moved. Second.
Okay, and I will turn this one over to Debbie.
Good evening, board members, welcome. So this report is actually a two-part report. Annually, we report out for our developer fee funds, and how we spend those funds, how we collect those funds, and this report also includes a look back to the five-year. So Government Code 66001 requires an annual report, reporting out to the public and also to the school board, and with your approval to approve that annual report. It must be done by the end of the calendar year, so by December. So we've had this report posted since November 9th, meeting our statutory requirements to have a public review. In addition, I have included a five-year look back on the fees and how we have spent those developer fees, and that is in accordance with Government Code 66001, which requires that we report all of the fees collected and how we spent them, and also how we plan to spend those ending balances going forward. So the five-year projection on our facility needs is really how we spend these funds, and we have lots of work to do. Brett and team have mapped this out over their three- and five-year and 10-year plans. It includes some HVAC, football field replacements, card readers, security cameras, there's a whole list in the report, weight room improvements to our facilities, additional portables, perhaps, some lighting around our campuses. So we strategically join these funds along with other funds that we get from grants and one-time monies to make sure that our facilities are kept up. Also, out of these funds, we pay our COPS. Remember that we enhance some of our facility admin buildings with these by taking out the certificates of participation. So we have about $2.5 million in that payment every year, and about a half a million dollars comes out of these funds to support that payment, in addition to monies that come from other sources in order to complete the entire payment. From Fund 40, we take $2 million out of Fund 40 in order to make those certificates of participation payments. So we utilize the monies very specifically and very targeted, along with our other monies, to make sure that our buildings and our facilities are updated, and we will have a later presentation for you on our facility projection plans for our five- and 10-year plans with facilities. But this is the annual report and the five-year look back report, so I'm pleased to tell you that we have sufficient funds scored to do those projects, about $7.2 million as we closed our books last summer going forward, and we will continue to do those developer fee collections and appropriate those dollars accordingly. If anybody had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Okay.
No, except thank you, Debbie.
Thank you so much.
Both of you two ladies are doing a fantastic job, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay, 5 to 0. Debbie, you're up again. On 9.7, I'll entertain a motion for the first interim financial report.
So moved, second.
Thank you. Debbie, this is your turn. Shante?
Yes. So I just want to, before we get started with the report itself, I just want to say to you, the board, the district, so as your incoming CBO, one of my main priorities is to be as transparent as I can be through the budget process, so that we are all on the same page about the resources that we truly have, and so that we can really build trust in these budget numbers. So what you're going to see this evening, though, you're going to see some very, very significant changes compared to our 45-day revise that we presented back in August, back in August. So there are changes both in revenue as well as expenses. Some of the revenue changes are due to statutory changes that became law after the 45-day revise, that would be, there was a change in COLA, and so a little later in the, in the presentation, I will go through these things in some detail, but I just want to preface it and let you know that you're going to see some significant changes. From the expenditure side, once we closed our books for unedited actuals for last year at the end of September, we realized that there were significant variances in the different categories of our budget, particularly in most substantial, there was about a $25 million variance in salaries and benefits. So that really just indicated to us that our budgeted numbers were not a true representation of what we're spending. And so what we did is we went into a very significant project, we worked with our human resources partners, thank you Christine Foot and her team, we really worked with them on a position control project to really comb position control, really validate positions that were in there, to ensure that we were actually including things in our budget that were true and real positions. And as a result, you'll see later, there was some significant savings that we realized from that project. And not only position control, but we did comb our entire general fund budget, all of the accounts and object codes, just to make sure that we were truly representing what was, what we actually project to go on. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Debbie.
Well, thank you so much. So I agree with her assessment, absolutely, and I'm pleased to, next slide, please, to share with you that this is still an extraordinary year for the state of California. The fund balances at the state have been large, and I have been reporting this over and over as we've done these various presentations. You will see this evening, very significant improvements to revenue adjustments as well since the adopted budget and the 45-day budget revisions that we did in mid-August. But the first interim really is our opportunity as a business division to advance those carryover dollars as we close our books from the prior year, we bring those carryover unused dollars forward, we also update. We also update all of our grant awards. Remember, when we're developing this budget in the spring, we're always looking at estimates. And as you know, we have significant one-time dollars appropriated for the district, some that are advancing year over year, three years, four years, six years. But we were also aware of many legislative enhancements that were not appropriated in the adoption budget at the state. And as our legislature continued to work on the budget and those ending balances at the state, then school districts up and down the state and K-14 got more dollars. So we ended up with, the first item that I wanted to talk about this evening, the local control funding formula. Now, that brings in more than 95% of our revenue dollars on the regular. So this is so unusual, I can't even tell you how unusual this is. I've been in this business for 33 years, and I have never seen a COLA this high. So we start out with statutory COLA of 6.56%. And then the legislature had additional state dollars and they appropriated more. So at the 45-day budget revision, I brought to you those dollars coming forward. And then, following that even, we got another, what was it, .78? .78% that we found out in October. So it's been a moving target, but a great moving target because it's brought more dollars into our district. So what you see is that even since the 45-day budget revision, 1.1 million dollars more in just local control funding formula, ongoing dollars, bringing our COLA to date, 13.26%. So those are extraordinary dollars. I don't know if you'll ever see them again quite that high, but this is really, really good news. Well, I'm going to add a little side note to this because so many people are talking about inflation, and they're talking about, well, we're going to have cuts, we're going to do this. But that's not so true in our environment right now because school districts, our K-12, K-14 partners also include about 38% of the state budget. So while other parts of the state budget may be cut, may have, may have some reductions, it won't happen for this part of the budget in the K-14. So we will continue to see improvements next year, and they're already talking about probably in the 8% range. So we'll keep our eyes on that, and when we approach second interim, we should have more information for you after the governor's conference in January. We'll bring you those updates as we see them. So part of what is this big giant movement that you are going to see in the first interim, and it's, you know, I feel bad for all the people that left and didn't get to hear all this budget information this evening. But you're going to see the revenue enhancements, but you're also going to see the work that our staff did in really combing through the budget and making sure that it was as realistic as possible. So we see those adjustments, and then on the revenue side, what we looked at was really the position control. Aligning the position control with human resources records, with the payroll records, and what was represented in the budget. And once again, like Shanti said, there were significant vacancies in the budget. We were able to identify and remove those out of the budget. So our alignment continues, our work continues into the second interim, and I'm sure that we will have more adjustments, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later in this presentation. We also had a significant adjustment with our enrollment. This is also really good news. In the spring, when the district was looking at how many kids we might have for the next fiscal year, they thought that we were going to decline in enrollment, but we didn't. We actually grew in enrollment. So that net change was from a minus 3.5% to a plus 1.5% approximately. We picked up 5%, and that was a significant amount of money. And we're going to show you what that looks like. Next slide, please. It's kind of small, so it's hard to see. Arts and music block grant, oh, there it is. Thank you. So arts and music block grant, 6.8 million. This particular block grant, thank you, goes over four fiscal years. While it is one-time money, we can appropriate it over four fiscal years. In addition to this money, we're very happy to see that in November, the voters approved arts and music block grant on top of our Prop 98 appropriations. So on top of our 38% ownership of the state coffers, we get more money for arts and music beyond this, which is going to be ongoing money, getting COLA every year. We don't know what that looks like, but when second interim comes around, hopefully the state will be able to tell us how much money we'll get for our ongoing arts and music program in addition to these dollars, which are also discretionary dollars. Next, home-to-school transportation. This is a remarkable improvement, and I shared this with you already in the 45-day budget revision, where in the home-to-school transportation has been flat-funded for over 10 years. It hasn't even gotten COLA. It's been just over a million dollars for this district, even though our costs have gone up year over year. And as we give raises, we give raises to all employees, including our bus drivers and our transportation folks. And yet, year over year, we have had to take more money out of the general fund unrestricted to support the transportation encroachment. This is the first time in over a decade that we got significant dollars. 60% of what we spent last year, we get that in, you know, minus the million dollars that we already got, we got 2.3 million dollars more. Now, that money is also ongoing money, and it is also subject to continuing COLA dollars. So that's a huge improvement for our school district. And our school district, by the way, very unusual when it comes to the transportation because unlike many other school districts up and down the state, we continue to serve our gen ed students, not just our special ed mandatory populations. So we actually ended up getting a lot more money than most school districts because we continued our program. So this is really good news for us. In addition, you will see later in other budget improvements, the fact that we are going after multiple grants at this time for vehicles that will be electric. And we've had some folks helping us that are going to help us put in the stations, the charging stations. And because of the area we're in, we think we can get them for free. So we're working on that, and we're working on some electric buses, and we will start to improve our fleet as we go on. I know it's a little longer than 10 minutes, I apologize. I get so excited when I talk about budget. The next area is the learning recovery emergency block grant, and we had 21.3 million dollars. And this is one-time money, but it can be spent over six fiscal years. So as we map that around our LCFF program with Dr. Yi and some of the other one-time monies, we can really stretch these dollars out into the future. Next slide, please. So this is going to be a little recap of what I just said. So the increases to LCFF since the last time we visited you about budget, 1.1 million dollars, ongoing dollars. And then transportation beyond the LCFF add-on, 2.3 million dollars. Learning recovery emergency block grant, 21.3 million dollars over six years. And arts and music block grant, 6.8 million dollars over the four years. Next slide, please. Arts and music block grant instructional materials. We went over this in a previous budget session, but again, some of these dollars can be aligned to our program and our standards, standards-aligned professional development. But it can also be a little, excuse me, discretionary, so it will be up to the district to do some planning. Gosh, they're leaving left and right here. Next slide, please. So the learning recovery emergency block grant is the 21.3 million dollar over six years, and these are the areas that it must support. So this is really restricted dollars, but it can be combined with all of our other grant sources to accelerate some of these programs around closing the learning gaps and providing additional supports for kids, instructional learning time, and more. So pretty exciting. So I will turn over the next section to Shanti, I'm so excited I can't even say her name, for enrollment and the multi-year projection. Thank you so much.
Okay, next slide. So on this slide, we just did a small recap of enrollment and ADA for the past three years and then the current year. So this is just showing a pattern, the pattern that we have seen over the last couple of years. Other than, you know, an anomaly in 2021, in which we know was due to COVID-19, we are in fact growing as opposed to declining. And I know, like, second interim and budget last year, when I was presenting and talking to you guys, we talked about projected declines. At that time, we were using a study that was provided to us by Decision Insight, and then that particular study was showing a decline over the next several years. Since that study is obviously not proving out, we are changing our assumptions in our budget process, beginning with this first interim. And in the multi-year projection, instead of reflecting a decrease, we're just holding it flat for now until we get more data. We just felt that that's a better representation of what really our revenue will be, and then we won't see that large fallout at the end of the year. Next slide. Okay, I won't dive into this too much, but, so this is Form 01, the next two slides. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please, Chris. And so this complete form was actually attached to the agenda. This was the backup, this was part of the SACS backup. The important thing we just wanted to show from this form, that our combined ending fund balance, and combined meaning restricted and unrestricted, projected at the end of this year, would be a combined 70, nearly 73 million dollars. Next slide. In these next two slides, I'll kind of go over in detail where we're getting those dollars from. So instead of going year by year and line by line for you guys, we thought it would be really relevant to just show you guys a comparison of where we were at the 45-day revise for the current year, where we're projecting due to the first interim, and then we'll see the difference, and we'll just go through some explanations very quickly. But it's just kind of very important that we all just kind of understand what's happening and why it's happening, and then what we foresee moving forward. So first and foremost, we talked about LCFF, which is, as Debbie said, about 95% of our revenue. So we have a 7.3 million dollars in our LCFF revenue. So that is made up of, we talked about the additional COLA, so that was a 0.78% change in the COLA, was 1.1 million dollars. The additional transportation add-on, 2.3 million dollars. So that is actually booked as part of our LCFF revenue because it's part of the calculator. We did adjust for a decrease in our UPP. And so last year, our UPP, or our unduplicated pupil count, was at 86, nearly 87%. This year, we're currently at 80%. We were projecting early on that we were not even going to come in at 75%, but due to really the excellent work of the sites and all the staff and teachers that really supported the effort, we were able to recognize an 80% UPP. But due to that change, we did reduce our LCFF revenue by 2.3 million dollars. But obviously, that's, it's offset by all these other things that are going on. Now, the change in enrollment, again, so that's very, very, very significant. That 5% increase, which was made up of a correction in our projections, plus a real true realization of 1.5, equals 6.2 million dollars. So the total there, again, is 7.3 million dollars. And so we felt it was really important to, you know, to do the work and correct now. So rather than, again, it falling out and just being a part of the fund balance at the end of the year, we can really truly determine how we use these dollars going forward. Next, we have some federal revenue, and there are some small changes in the federal revenue, about 2.5 million dollars. And that's simply because we updated our one-time money and our categorical funding. We brought over the carryover from the prior year, and we also updated for projected expenses based on plans that we currently have in place. There is an increase of 10.8 million dollars in our state revenue, most of which, most of that is our arts and music grant and our learning loss recovery grant. We booked what we actually received in this year in those funds, and so that's why you see a large uptick in that revenue. And then we had some small local changes, that was just updated for actual activity. So our total increase in revenue is over 20 million dollars, 20.2 million dollars. Okay, stay with me. Stay with me, I'm almost there. As far as expenses, oh yeah, so as far as expenses, so with our compensation and through all the work that we already described, we've realized a 10.1 million dollar decrease in total of our, for positions and benefits. Now, again, this is because there were positions in our budget that were encumbering money, vacant positions in our budget encumbering money, but they were not filled, they did not have people in them, they were just vacant positions. And so as a result, we actually eliminated, it was about 140 vacant positions encumbering dollars in our budget that we abolished, and so as a result of that, 10.1 million dollars fell out for both compensation and benefits. Then if we move down, if we go to supplies and services, so you see large adjustments, you know, for both supplies, 9.4 billion dollars and 1.1 for services. But actually, these adjustments are primarily just adjustments that were made in the restricted budget. When we put these restricted budgets together, for the most part, we just booked the dollars in instructional supplies or other operating. But as we really go through and true up the plans and true it up to actual spending, that money had to be reallocated to other areas, and so that's what you see represented there. The big jump, 14.4 million dollars in capital outlay, that is to reflect mostly the HVAC projects that we're doing right now, that's funded through our ESSR dollars, our one-time COVID dollars. And it's also, it is also reflecting some equipment replacement that we did in the transportation department. So since that we've gotten a new supervisor in there, they've been doing a lot of maintenance in that department, you guys know we had an emergency where we had to stop using our in-ground lifts really quickly and bring in $180,000 worth of above-ground lifts, and we'd just replacing other equipment, $30,000 toolboxes. So most of those are one-time expenses that we won't see carry forward, but that's just what that large change is. So overall, we have improved the budget, just by all of this work, by the revenue changes and this additional work that we put in, we have an improvement of 26.4 million dollars. So at 45-day revise, we were projecting a 3.1 million dollar deficit, and now we see that large swing where we're also, where we actually have a 2.3 million dollar surplus. Next slide, I'll just go ahead and skip to the nitty-gritty. So really, the bottom line here is that we are projecting an undesignated reserve of about 37.2 million dollars or 18.8%. And so again, that's a 24 million dollar increase in the dollar amount and a 10.36% increase in the percentage itself. Next slide. So we're very happy to report, obviously, that we are coming forward with a positive certification for our financial obligations. That means that the district will meet the current, our obligations for the current year and the two subsequent years. and the two subsequent years. So we, we just recommend that you approve this budget tonight. The next steps in the process, obviously, we'll continue our work. That's the next slide. Obviously, we will continue the work that we're doing, we'll, we'll continue to review and refine the budget. We'll, we'll be coming back to you guys around February, where we'll, we'll be presenting the second interim, and so we'll bring back changes at that time as well. Next slide. Are there any questions?
Not, not a question, but just thank you. You said you identified about 148 positions. No positions were cut.
No, sir.
These were just positions that we put in the budget and...
They just never went out.
They, I'm old school, so I'm going to call. The money was hidden, but now it's been found. And so thank you for finding the money. Appreciate that.
They were unicorns floating around.
So I, I want to address that just a little bit because these were, these were vacancies. And so, for example, bus drivers, and I'll, I'll use that as an example. We had vacancies sitting in the budget for bus drivers, but it wasn't, when we, when we hired replacement bus drivers, instead of using that particular position, they created a new one. But part of that was the result of changing some financial systems, and the financial systems at the county office are changing, and all of that backend that feeds into the, the actual budget, you know, those, you have to do manually. And so I can see where the error happened, but now we have corrected it, and we wanted to make sure that we represented a budget that was, that was clearly part of, you know, what we saw in HR records and what we saw in the payroll. So it's not that we cut any positions, but we just did a lot of cleanup of things that were in the old system.
And your transparency is greatly appreciated, Jasmine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Other questions?
Is, is it possible that this could be put on our, our website or someplace where...
Yes, I have extra copies, and we'll, we'll make sure that it is on our website, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Very well done.
Thank you. Every...
Before you take the final vote, you know, one of the things, Mike, Tanya, we will meet, we'll continue to discuss the budget prior to negotiations. You know, we've had a lot of discussions about it, and our commitment to you, to the board, is that we will come to the table each and every time with the same deck of... Plan, this is what it isn't. You know, there's a lot of different things. And so, you know, our commitment to transparency to everybody will maintain and will continue.
All right, at this time, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
We already moved.
Okay.
So now I'm calling for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention? All right, thank you. That was a 5-0. Moving on to item 10.1, expulsions.
So move. Second.
Second. And I will call for the vote on this. No discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstentions? This one, Patrick does not vote on, so this one. Thank you. Okay, information items. Any discussion for item 11.1, conference reports? 11.2, field trips? 11.3, the Williams Act? 11.4, the Williams Settlement, second quarterly report? 11.5, the Williams Settlement, first quarterly report? 11.6, board policy revisions? This is the first reading. 11.7, consent to file the J-138? Okay. This time we'll have business reports. So business services.
Once again, thank you. I, I do want to remark on 11.7 because I think it is a significant item for the board to be aware of, and it kind of dovetails into my report for this evening. You all know that Sims was closed for three school days. It started on a Wednesday afternoon after school was dismissed, when there was a report of a possible gas leak. And yes, it did indeed turn out to be a gas leak, and it was in an isolated area. So the next day, maintenance crews worked very hard to, with the gas company, to help us locate exactly where that leak was, and we thought we found it. In fact, it was a good, strong reading, and then it turned out that as we corrected that gas leak, turned the gas back on, there were other gas leaks, there were three more, and, and so on. So we ended up closing school then that Thursday and that Friday. We were very hopeful after we found a pattern of some piping that had been worn over time and, and not properly installed, that we had found all the leaks, because there were three small ones. But we, you know, once a gas company comes out there, they red-tag your school, you've got to get it exactly right. And so then, come Friday night, then we decided that a specialty company would have to come in and help us over the weekend, so that we can make sure that everything was corrected. Now, this involved four-by-six-foot holes that we drilled through concrete that was six inches thick and dug out holes to get to these pipes. And it was a decision at that point that we made to dig up all of the fittings, wherever they were. And so we isolated, Brett and team isolated all of those. Altogether, there were 10 more. And so what you saw in your board packet this evening was a ratification of the original contract with the specialty company to help us and get that school open, even on Monday morning, and that was a really cold weekend, the guys were working. We had the gas company come out, and we had a small leak, which then did get repaired, and we opened on Tuesday. So the J-13A is not a form that you use very often, but in this particular case, we, we are filing it and presenting it to you this evening as part of our request and waiver to the State Board of Education to allow for those instructional days and the instructional time, and all of those instructional minutes that we're required to do and our ADA. So we're being very proactive about it. We're going to do it right away. We're not waiting for the auditors next year to tell us about it and then do it then. We're doing it right now, and that's going to be part of our evidence for the waiver to the state. So I'm happy to report that with the help of Brett and team and the specialty company, that over Christmas break, we will continue our good work of preventative maintenance. Since the holes were already open, it seemed appropriate to us, get in there and just replace them all, so we don't have to do this all over again. So I have to thank Brett and team for all of the work, but also their willingness to work through Christmas break to fix, you know, and replace all of these pipes throughout the campus. So that's going to be a great amount of work. I want to say thank you to all of the managers that I've worked with, and Mr. Mollman, and also Mr. Coles, you know, for helping me through this district. I kind of dropped in here on a helicopter and hit the ground running and with a budget I didn't build, and everybody welcomed me, and it's been very wonderful to work with the union leadership, as well as all of the principals and cabinet members. And I want to say congratulations to Shanti. She's going to do a great job. She's exceptionally talented, extremely technical, and I think you've got to win her there. So have a happy holiday and welcome our new board members. Thank you so much.
Dr. Yee, edit services?
Yes, hi. Good evening. First of all, I'd like to actually thank Patrick. Patrick, I know that you probably want to stay with us longer. It wasn't a 29-minute board meeting, but you have done such a great job to really bring that voice of our student body to this forum and that civic engagement, just that light and positivity that you bring to each of our meetings. I want to thank you personally, just for, for being here, for choosing to be a student board member and for the service that you do. So I want to thank you. Also to welcome Mr. Crosby and Rosie. Looking forward to working closely with both of you to really educate our students and raise the bar and ensure that we are doing what's in the best interest of them. So thank you for being here. Thank you also for your service and looking forward to it. Just an announcement, I think Mike touched on it a little bit earlier, we are excited to be sending 94 of our teachers to the Good Teaching Conference. That is the highest, that is the highest, you know, participation we've had, and we will continue to support that because we know that having that direct impact to students is what we're, we're here to do. And also, Mike, I know we've been texting and with principals as well, too, we will be meeting after the board meeting to look at a way to support our teachers in getting their grades in and extending that deadline, and hopefully ARI's tomorrow will work a little bit faster as well. So just want to let you know that we are working on that. And then again, keeping it brief, again, happy holidays. Please be safe, be healthy. We look forward to a even better 2023, and be safe, everyone. Thank you.
Carl, do you want to give an update on HR?
Oh, wait, oh, I got it. Okay.
During your report? Okay. Then legislation? Barbara, would you like to share legislation?
Well, I can tell you that next year, the governor is going to come out with a little bit more than what he had. In fact, he was at a meeting last night, so, and that was with the county group. And there is going to be just a little bit more money for certain things. I mean, it's just a layover to the next year, so. And I really like the idea of us filing that for the, for Sims, because if we need any help or whatever you need, let us know as a board, so we can help you.
Thank you.
And, and that way, we won't have to worry about that as much. And that's what we've been doing. We've been, I'm on what's called a SADAS board, which is with the county, and it's a group of people that meet, and also on the legislation. And they, we're now got a lot of new people, so everybody is waiting to see who's, who's who on each board. And in fact, we didn't even pick a mayor the other night. I was at the city council, and they didn't even pick a mayor because it was 2-2 vote. And so they got to wait for another person before they can have a, a mayor for the city of Victorville. So everybody's waiting till January so that we can get everything together, but it looks good for us for education. One comment you made was that we do work on getting money for education as much as we possibly can. And this is our first time that we've gotten transportation. I mean, I've been working on that for 10 years, with 10 years we've been trying to get, because LA gets all the money, all the big cities get all the money, but the little cities don't get that kind of money. And so this was the first year we had a, a whole list of all the schools, there's 33 districts within San Bernardino County, all the schools, and how much money we don't get, and how much it's encroaching on everything we have. Special Ed is 23 million, and we were 4 million almost with transportation, encroachment in our funds. So all of this is what we're trying to work on, to straighten out, so that we don't have that anymore. So this year, it looks like it might be a pretty good year for us. And most of our things, we got it set up, so it, it goes all the way to 2024 and 2025. But the art, we're going to try to make that permanent and make food permanent, where it's universal, no matter what, especially in Washington. And last night, I was talking, we were talking Sacramento and Washington. So we're going to be trying to push all those things. And anything that you find that we need, that you think we need to do, let me know, so we can push those things in those areas. And I'll be flying a terrible, zoom in anymore. They're making me fly to Sacramento. That's terrible. And then I just, only one time I have to go to Washington. That's good.
Well, thank you for doing that, though. Look at how our students benefit from that.
Oh, yeah. And we're working on also a bill or MOU, a waiver for teachers that come out of state. In other words, if you are a teacher that taught in Arizona, or you taught in Wyoming or someplace, and you come to California, we're trying to work on a waiver so that teacher can teach right away, so she doesn't have to go through a lot of changes to be able to be a teacher. We're trying to work, we're working on that.
The reciprocity.
It's like a impact bill. Because we got a lot of military people, they're teachers. You know, like, my mom was a teacher, and she was, you know, my dad traveled around the military, but she always had to take courses or do something in each state. Well, we're trying to get that so that mobility is, is a part of the credentialing, so that we won't have that problem in getting teachers, you know, because we have a shortage in teachers, and we have a shortage, believe it or not, in administrators. So if you want to be an administrator, wouldn't be a bad idea to look into it.
No, thanks.
You know, so those areas we're looking at as well.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, board member comments. Mr. Barrios.
Okay, well, so welcome to everybody. I see the crowd's still pretty big. You guys haven't gotten home yet to see Mr. Coles' Seahawks and see how they're doing tonight.
I'm actually being very mature today, Mr. Barrios. I'm just...
Yeah, I know it's on the, I know it's on the screen. Okay. Anyway. First off, I'd like to, I'd like to welcome our new members. You know, Rosie, you, you did a stint here a few years back, all right? So you kind of know the lay of the land. Now, Mr. Crosby, he's been out on that end of the board meetings for a long time, we'll say, okay? I don't remember who was president, it's been so long. But this time, you're not going to get thrown out of a board meeting, so it's a, it's a good thing, all right? But you can't carry a sign like you used to, all right? Okay. And next, I'd like to say, this has been said already, but I'd like, really like to say farewell to Jackie and Elvin, okay? Really, really goodbye this time, I guess, all right? So, yeah. Well, hey, you know, you guys, you helped keep things going steady and keep things afloat while, you know, everybody else was catching up and getting up to speed, because, you know, these guys had enough to do, and you guys made it a little easier on them, so they were able to get used to the job without having to, you know, fight all the little battles that you guys took care of. And also, goodbye to Patrick, okay? Your tenure's over, but you did a great job. And I'm sure Mom and Dad have already told you that, but I'm not Mom or Dad, but I'm telling you for sure, you did a good job. All right. And next, it was really great to see all these students here, you know? We used to have them all the time, and then things kind of went down, and then COVID, of course, screwed everything up like everybody else says, but it's great to see the students. And along the student lines, the student advisory team, beside, and I see a couple things, besides the fact the students are getting a voice, so they can speak up about things that may, may be wrong with their campuses. Also, I see another thing that maybe people don't think about. As the students realize they have a voice in that campus, they're going to be worried about our campus more, which could possibly lead to a little more, you know, school pride and, and school spirit and things like that, because if they're worried about their school, they won't have as much time to go fuss around and get in trouble, all right? And it's really true, okay? All right, now, as far as electric buses, you know, electrification, you know, everybody else went to the, reaching the community and all that. Almost all the sessions I went to are on, you know, electrification and all this kind of stuff. And I hope that once we start making that step, we get in contact with people like Lancaster. They've already started instituting, you know, electric buses in their transportation department. And Modesto, they've got a whole bunch in their bus fleet, and they're, they're working that into their system, so we can find out from people that have already done it, so we don't make any mistakes that they did, and we can save some money, all right? Because that's what it's all about, because there's, there's tons of advisors out there that want to sell you all this stuff. But if we have an idea of what we want and don't want, and have objective goals, because one school district, they had goals for electrification that were... objective goals, because one school district, they had goals for electrification that were totally unrealistic, all right? You're up in the mountains and you want to have a totally electric fleet. I don't think so, all right? So, you have realistic goals and knowing what's involved is a very good thing, all right?
They could only go up the hill. That's exactly what would happen up there.
Well, yeah. I guess they figured they could coast down the hill.
Because we were talking about it. You could go up the hill, but they, that's as far as they could go.
Yeah, we have unique, we have unique situations here, all right?
It's crazy.
Okay. Oh, and along the thing about Sims, all right, how they were, had the gas leak and poor Carl, he went to CSBA and every time the phone rang, you could just kind of see his face like, oh, no, not again. And they, just bad news, one after another. But, and even if there's any doubters, I went by Sims on that Sunday morning and I took pictures. I tried to send them to you. I don't think they went through though. But the trucks were there, the district truck was there, the private company was there. And either they just left their doors open on the truck all night long, or they were out there working already at seven o'clock. So, everybody made a, a good team effort to get that done. And thank, thank you guys very much. And lastly, guys have a good holiday. Enjoy some time with family, with some friends, or just peace and quiet, all right? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Crosby.
Well, the student's mostly gone except for Patrick, but I want to thank all the students, including Patrick, for their reports. And I haven't heard yours yet, but I know it'll be good. But I want to just thank them for their reports. And I drew it for Jose. It was in the past, we've always had a lot of students and it kind of died down. So, I'm glad that there's so many doing that today. Both, Elvin's still here. Elvin, good seeing you again. And thanks for all the work that you did coming back out of retirement. Appreciate that. Jackie, I, I can't even say coming back out of retirement. I don't think you ever went into retirement, so.
No, she keeps coming back. Her goals will show up.
Yeah. But thanks for both of you for coming back and, and all the work you did while you were here to begin with and the extra work you've done. Tremendous job. We really appreciate it. And you will be missed, of course. I, I do want to say thank you to, to the board members. I know each, each one of you one way or the other. Rosie, I'm looking forward to working with you. Jose and I are talking about, I think about four years ago, five years ago or something like that, we're out campaigning for you and stuff like that. And we're out there and stuff. And I'm glad you're on the, the board with us. Penny, I want to thank you for your friendship and look forward to working with you. And Barbara, we've known each other, I won't say long, many years.
Many years, that's it.
We've known each other and I'm really looking forward to your leadership and all that and working with you. And thanks for all you've done over the year. And Jose, particularly for you, we've had over forty years of friendship. And, and I just admire and respect you so much and look forward to, to working with you in an official capacity on, on this side, as you said. So, I am looking forward to that.
You don't have to carry signs here.
Yeah. Well, but you have just helped me so much in, in, from going, getting railroad ties and decorating our yards with them.
You're going way back now.
Yeah, way back. But anyhow, I want to thank all the staff, certificated and classified. I think we have a heck of a good district. And I think that our staff puts in the time necessary to do that. And I'm grateful now to be here and, and I want to thank you for all your hard work. And I also want to give a special thanks to all those who helped on my campaign. So, so many people that, you know, Brenda, the Jennifers, Bonnie, you know, Gary, all, all these people that helped out so much, but particularly to Anita Tucker. I want to thank her. She was my campaign manager. And she was the one that was the final one talked me into running for the, the office and all. And I really want to thank her and I'm looking forward to that. Most importantly though, I want to thank my wife for all her support. Nobody has stood by me like her. So, thank you, sweetie. And then also, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Time Off, whatever it is that you're going to be doing. Hope you have a good time. And again, thank you and I'm looking forward to working with you.
Well, this guy just came from Thailand. At least that's what, is that right? He was over in Thailand. My dad was there twice during, when he was in the military. Had to go to Thailand.
He got back at three-thirty today.
Oh, my goodness. Are you awake?
Nope.
Oh, you're drinking Coca-Cola?
Yep.
Well, first of all, I want to congratulate the, the new people. I've known both of them well. And I've certainly known him. His sister went to school with me.
Long time.
And a long time ago and graduated with me in the sixties. So, and I've written about that family. Because they're one of the oldest families that are, that is in Victorville. And all of them lived across the track. All the Afro-Americans and the Hispanics lived across the track. And what year did you graduate?
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one. So, he's nineteen sixty-one, so. And his sister graduated with me. There's a lot of you guys, isn't there?
Sixty-six.
Where's your brother? He left.
Yeah.
The brother left, okay. And they, and these people have contributed very much, a great deal to Victorville. He worked for the Southwest Gas, right? And the brother worked for?
Contel.
Contel, yeah. But, and the telephone company. But these are contributors that have lived in our city for many, many years. And Mr. Crosby's been here forever. Forever. Not just a little bit, but forever. I mean, ever since I was elected to the board, which was in the nineties, right Jackie? Yeah, I was with another secretary. See, this is, Jackie is my, Jackie is my second secretary. Right Jackie? Yeah. And now I got a third secretary. But, thank you Jackie. You took care of me when I wasn't taking care of myself. She would call me on the road and say, Barbara, did you get so-and-so? You know you gotta go here. You gotta do this. I mean, she just took care of me to make sure. And I was so busy on one email. I never look at my other email, the one that's for the district. So, if you, if I don't answer you, it's because I don't look at it. It's my fault. And if you're waiting for the answer saying, why isn't Barbara getting back to me? It's because I didn't look at it. She sometimes will look over there and say, Barbara, you need to do this, you know? And then I'll do it. But, and she's learning.
Speed dial.
She's learning. And the other secretary did the same thing. They'd all go, oh, we better check on the other, gotta put all that stuff on the other email because she won't even look at it.
Before email.
So, but thank you very much, Jackie. And you know, I sat next to, when I was elected, I sat next to her dad. You know, he was already on the school board. And, and I, and you believe it or not, I had him at Hook. He was a teacher. And so, I had him at Hook. When I came from France, I went to Hook Junior High when I first came. In ninth, it had a ninth grade campus. So, her dad taught there. But then, when he got on the board, when I got on the board in the nineties, he was sitting right there. And he's the one who said to me, well, you know you gotta go to school. I said, go to school? Why would I have to go to school? And what he was talking about was CSBA. I need to go to those classes. I've already told them. Sign them up. So, that they can have that, have that ability to go to all of those boardsmanship. And I'm on a boardsmanship committee too, for the county, doing, doing a lot of stuff as well. And Mr. Moment, stand up. Stand up, Mr. Moment. I know you're hiding back here. You are hiding. Thank you very, very much for taking over when, when, and helping Carl. Because Carl, I talked to him today and he said you were a valuable asset. It's no way that, most times, most superintendents come in, they don't have anybody helping them. Nobody. And I've seen six. I think it's been six or seven, whatever it is. Because I started out with Pat Mark. And every time, every one of them have to get adjusted. But thank you for helping him and all of us stay focused and adjusted at the same time. I really appreciate that. And thank you for helping us find that overage of money. Along with Carl. Right, Carl? And hopefully, we will get more people on our cabinet, similar to Carl, as we go into the future and, and have a very great time. And listen, if, if we need you again, would you come back? I'm getting, I'm getting the word right now. I'm not messing around. Are you, would you come back?
No.
I, I did this on purpose. So, maybe you'll change your mind if you decide. But thank you very much. Really appreciate. And Jackie, I'm gonna miss you too.
I'll be right back.
I know, ah, well, I know I'll see you. But I don't know where he's gonna be. It's no telling. And, and as you know, I've been traveling around, trying to make sure that we get grants and we get everything that we can in our district. Anything that I can see out there that we, that can come our way, that's what I do. I make sure it comes our way. And I make sure the county knows that we exist. So, we get a lot that a lot of districts don't get. And they'll say, how did you get that? How did that district get that? And we don't have that. Apple Valley's going, we don't have that. How did you get that? Or Hesperia. They don't have all the stuff that we do. We got quite a bit. And a lot of it comes our way because we were the number one district for a very long time. And we only played Barstow. So, that was it, right?
That's right.
That's right.
Barstow don't count.
Yeah. And I want to thank all the students that came tonight. Oh, my God. I love it. I love it. At least you know there's still something wrong with our bathrooms. I mean, we complained in the sixties. The seventies complained.
My dad complained.
And his dad complained in the eighties.
My sister complained.
And what is this, nineties, they complained. And now we're in the tens. And everybody's complaining about these bathrooms. Mr. Jerkerson, we gotta do something about that, don't we?
Sixty years?
I mean, that's, how many decades is that? That's sixty years of complaints about those bathrooms. So, we gotta get that changed around.
Up to prioritize now.
And so, I really like hearing that because we know we're still around with the same little things that are going wrong in our school. And Patrick, thank you very much for sitting there and being with me. That's not booze.
Yeah, you know, I'm probably.
I want, I put that on there, but it's not booze. It's actually just a drink. But, thank you very much. And that's for you for being there and being with us this whole time. Yeah, yeah. And, and eventually, what year is this for you?
My senior year.
Oh, wow. Oh, my gosh.
One more semester.
One more semester. You're out. Ooh, crazy. I wanted to show you a card that was given to me. I don't mean to take so much time, but for that family engagement that we had, we got, we not only got the golden bell for that, but they gave us a thousand dollars at CSBA. A thousand dollars. And a group called Thought Exchange. They thought we were, we, we are honored to recognize your team for incredible impacts you've made for student and family engagement. Thank you for leading the way with this work. And it has Thought Exchange Team. And they were out of Canada. But I love the card. Look at the card. Isn't that beautiful? It is. It absolutely is. And we do a very good job. They're gonna copy, not copy, but they're gonna look at our, how we do family engagement. But we're going to start a Afro-American group. So, that we can make sure that we touch all bases of everyone that we have. And focus on that. And then next year, we're gonna do some workshops. And everybody will be invited to our workshops that we do as well. All right. Have a very happy, happy holiday.
Thank you. Okay, Rosie?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank my, my campaign manager, my, my wife, who has, who has been my campaign manager over forty-five years now for all my endeavors. And this was the, this was the special one. And I'm, I'm really proud to, to be here and, and serve in this capacity. Especially knowing that I'll be here four years, not six months.
That's true.
Yeah. I, I was appointed back in twenty sixteen, in fact, to replace Mrs. Crosby, who had resigned. Yes. And so, that was the best thing that happened to me. Because I learned, I learned a lot in those six months. You know, I, I learned, there's so many acronyms. I've never been around a place that has so many acronyms. I mean, everybody speaks in acronyms. And I'm sitting there writing them out and trying to find out what they, what they mean. But I tell you what, if I ever had a question, Jackie was the one that I went to. And Jackie helped me those six months, the ins and outs. You know, Mother Teresa was asked one time, her, her definition of a saint. And Mother Teresa said, her definition of a saint was, "An ordinary person doing extraordinary things." And Jackie, you're a saint. Yes, you are.
You are.
That was the, that was the best six months of my life, thanks to you. I wanted to thank my, my family and my friends. But I see they, they've all left.
Your brother left.
Because.
Yes.
He's not here. And now he's not here.
But, but I, I do want to thank them as well as my, my family and friends that are watching on YouTube for their love and support. And I'm looking forward to these next four years to serve with my fellow board members, as well as Mr. Coles. So, we can continue to make this district the best there is for our students.
Best in the world.
As well as our staff. And thank you very much for, for the time. I'm looking forward, like I say, I'm excited. These next four years is gonna be great. Thank you. Merry Christmas to you all. If you're traveling, travel, travel safe to and from. And we'll have a great next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, it's your turn.
Go ahead.
No, you go first. And I do want to just check with Mr. Coles. Can he keep his name tag?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. All right. Gonna keep, try to keep it short and sweet.
You can take all the time you want. This is your, your time.
Thank you, guys. Absolutely. For the last, I don't remember how many months, certain amount of board meetings. It's been great. Just getting what the students need out there and seeing how fast, quickly and efficiently you guys work to get the students' needs done. And I'm pushing everything we absolutely can to further education and well-being in education. And, oh, those dates about those grades. I'm gonna need you to work as hard as you can to push that back, to push that back. Because that one is, oh, she's a very happy person, except when grades are due. So, yeah, we can let, let's have a. Um, I would like to thank Mr. Coles especially because not only did he welcome me, he made sure that everything I said was taken just as seriously as everything else and that he would absolutely consider not only my opinions, but. he would absolutely consider not only my opinions, but the opinions of all the students and the student body itself. Um, thank you for the gifts, the people who have gotten me them. I will absolutely appreciate. And that puzzle is, uh, I have ADHD. It's gonna get built probably every other day, and it's gonna look different every other day. So, that's gonna be something that I very much will use. Um, I'd like to thank VVTA, although most of them have left, and CSEA, and the NAACP for all contributing and working as hard as they can to integrate themselves, uh, into the school, into the board, into the district, to try to further the level of, level the playing field. Um, I'd like to welcome Mr. Rosie and Mr. Crosby. Um, now that I am going and you are coming, I hope that whoever sits in the seat next and you guys can work well together and work well with the other board members and can just continue to build this school district up. And the best part, the two weeks off, obviously. Um, have a Merry Christmas, have a, have a happy holidays. Do something that's going to make you relax. Take a nap, watch a movie, watch two movies even, wow! Listen to some Christmas music, go for a drive, do something that will make you relax. Promise it's good for you.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you for agreeing. All right. I want to give congratulations to both Kent and Rosie. Rosie, it's nice to see you back. I know you worked hard before for our students, and you will continue to do so. And Kent, I think I heard you say that you started teaching when you were twenty-eight. So you've obviously dedicated your life to VBUHSD. And thank you for coming back, and I know you're gonna continue to work for our students and staff. Thank you. Um, next, I'd like to tell, um, oh, about my visit. Kelly is here, and Chris is here, and Ramoni, thank you so much for spending the day with me on Tuesday. I got to visit several of our sites. First, I went to Victor. And Chris, your programs are amazing. It was wonderful to see the CTE programs. They are world-class. It was amazing. I got to see one of our students in action. I made sure we got to go check that he was studying, and he was.
That sonnet, that sonnet was amazing.
It was good. Also, Chris, thank you. I got to meet your son yesterday, and it was so nice to see him wearing a Victor hat. And he's so proud, and he's just such a nice young man. I'm so glad that he's at where I teach, so it was really nice to get to meet him. Then we, we got to visit Sims. We got to see their programs, and I thanked Clarissa for showing us around. And it was a wonderful time. We got to check up on Brett's work, and it looks really good. And, um, I thank you guys for, for hosting us there. And then finally, we were at Lakeview, your alma mater, one of your alma maters. We got to judge the business math students, their soft skills, and they did a wonderful job. That was just delightful to be, to be with those students. It was really special. Um, next, I would like to thank VVTA for your lovely holiday event. Thank you for inviting me. It was beautiful. It was really nice, spacious, people were dancing and having a great time. It was really quite nice. Brett, I'd like to thank you and your team for all the hard work, after-hours at Sims. You guys put in a lot of work, and I would like you to extend a special thank you to all of your, your team that worked with you, keeping our students safe. Um, a special thanks also to Eric. So Lindy, are you still here? Eric kept us informed about Google being down, Aries being down. We received several emails, so I well understand why you might need to adjust the deadlines because when I heard that, I thought, oh my gosh, my students, they too weren't able to get in their Google classroom, weren't able to get the things done that they needed to. So I appreciate you looking at that to see what you can do to help with that and maybe give Patrick a little extra credit for bringing that up. Okay, CSBA, we went to CSBA a couple weeks ago. Tanya, Mike, our association leaders, um, the three school board members right here, and some of our cabinet. It was wonderful time to learn about school board procedures and, uh, fellowshipping. It was nice to be with people, and it was just really nice to see what we need to do to keep our district running well. And one of the things that we discussed and we learned was that we're a team of six. And even though we have other teams, but the five board members and Carl work closely together to make sure that we are forging ahead and making sure that the goals of our district are met, that entails students, staff, families, community. And, um, the next meeting, you might notice a little bit of a different configuration because we want to keep our team of six together so we can work more effectively. So be prepared, we might be at different seats. We'll see about that.
Is it chairs?
Yeah. Um, Dr. Yee, Good Teaching Conference, that is wonderful. And ninety-four people? Wow, I can't imagine better training. And the teachers get to choose which sessions. It ranges from TK through grade fourteen. It's a wonderful conference. So I really applaud our district for sending that men, many people and, and increasing our knowledge with good teaching. I'd like to also thank Elvin for your continued service. If you've added up all your years in our district, how long have you worked with us?
A long time. I remember you back, probably about thirty, thirty and a half.
That's a lot. I think Kent's got a beat though, but, but that's a lot. That's really dedicated to us. Thank you.
They work at a lot of capacities.
I think Jose has too. I've got forty-one. Jose's got like, how many did you have? You're just a youngster, so.
I think Reagan was president when I started. Seventy-nine.
But Elvin, thank you. You've left much of a legacy, and, and I think, at least as far as my workings with you, I appreciate all that you've done, and also helping us define a wonderful superintendent to lead us from here. So thank you very much. Gosh, Jackie, I don't know what to say. You, you have run the district for many years under, under, um, I don't know, from behind the scenes. You've done so much to help everyone. I know the least of which is that you answer your phone. But I heard that in so many committees, all the things that needed to be changed in the district. One of the most common things was that people can't get a hold of people. And time and time again, I heard especially our union president say, "But if I ever need anything, I could call Jackie," and she picked up the phone. Jackie, that's the least of what you do, but that's a great thing. You help everyone. It's been a delight to work with you. Patrick, you are so fun to have as a school board member. You give a hundred and ten percent. You're, um, endearing, you champion the cause of all of our students. I liked when you realized that we love Adelanto as much as we love Victor. We love them all. However...
Sorry, it's true.
We don't necessarily love Apple Valley as much as we love our students, so...
Well, that's a different story.
That is a different story. Um, I'd like to thank all of you guys for staying. I hope you have a wonderful holiday. I hope you're safe. I hope your families are having a wonderful time. I hope you get to snuggle up when it's cold and go outside and enjoy the weather when it's not so cold. And I thank you very much for staying. Before I turn it over to Mr. Coles, we are gonna go back into closed session. Do we need to report anything out after that closed session?
No.
Okay, so those of you who'd like to stay, you may, but we won't be reporting anything out. But thank you so much for being here. Be safe, enjoy your holidays, enjoy your break. Thank you for all you do for all of our students and employees and families and community. Thank you very much. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Coles.
First, I'd like to, uh, welcome and congratulate our two new board members. Um, I look forward to, uh, working together. You know, there's no destination to education. You know, this is a great district, and we have a continued, you know, responsibility and opportunity to just make it even better. And because there just isn't a destination, and, uh, that honor and privilege of being able to work with you gives me a great deal of pride. And so, uh, welcome, and I look forward to, uh, the great things yet to come. Uh, also like to thank Debbie. Um, you know, I know that you'll be, uh, in a different seat out in the audience over the next month as Shantae takes over, but your quick, uh, your skill set to be able to come in here, um, and analyze the budget, um, and the ability to teach, um, others at the same exact time, um, it's valuable. And so thank you, um, for everything that, uh, that you have done. I'd like to thank our associations for so quickly kind of getting through a couple of MOUs. Um, I know they were on the works, um, and I know that, you know, we'll continue to, to work in that manner, um, because the more that we can get these things done faster, um, the more efficient that we are, that they only translate into better results for students. So, um, thank you for that, that quick work. With that, Patrick, why don't you come up here and join us? Is the ox winning by chance?
Mom will get you another one.
Oh, yeah.
Just want to let you know Heather's a Ford Knight fan, so I'm being very mature sitting next to her. So, uh, Patrick, being able to spend your time here, uh, and not only, uh, spend your time, uh, learning from the board, but also helping us learn and making us better, um, it's just, it's invaluable to the school district. And so because of that, you know, we'd like to present you, um, with a certificate that really just thanks you, um, commends rates, you know, the time that you have spent. I appreciate the laughter, uh, that you have given to me, uh, the friendship that I know will continue. And so I'd like to present you with this, uh, certificate. We also got you some gift cards, uh, you know, eat your spinach and all your vegetables. Most importantly, I want to...
For spinach?
Growing, can you, not too much more.
Yeah.
Trust me, I feel it every day. Just give yourself a few more years. I'd like to present you with this challenge coin that really, uh, you know, on behalf of the board, uh, that just says thank you for the excellence that you have done and, uh, for, for about making this district better. And you've absolutely done that in helping us. I'd like to honor you with this challenge coin on behalf of the board of education.
Has to stand on your chair, but we don't get work when it's come.
I see.
No, no way.
Great. See you everybody. Fantastic. Um, it's been great, thank you. All right, there you go. Jackie, will you come up here? I know how much you like to talk.
I'm a behind-the-scenes girl.
So Jackie, you know, uh, think back to your history here, you have been a assistant for a long time. In my time as a superintendent, I know how much work goes into, uh, you being an assistant to the superintendent, although we didn't get to work together. Eighteen years of working with superintendents, um, that's a long time. When people say, you know, that, uh, you run a school district, the first person I got here, they said, "No, not about the district. Talk to Jackie." And so, um, you know, it's awesome to be able to get to know you. I know that this isn't goodbye. I appreciate even the candid conversations that you have, uh, that we've had, um, and although they've been short. On behalf of the board, I'd like to honor you with the challenge coin in case, um, you know, for all of your dedication, just as a remembrance of the work that you have done here, and I think that you can feel the love. You didn't have to come back. You were retired. And you decided to come back because the love for the people here, um, in this district. And so, um, for that, I am so thankful, and I know everybody else here is extremely thankful. So on behalf of the board, I'd like to present you with the challenge coin. It's all up there. You have that.
There you go. Here's the last picture, Jackie.
It takes you to see me what other people are.
Come on over.
All right, Arnold.
There you go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I missed them at CSBA.
Um, don't sit down.
I know. Arnold is fun.
Yeah, move slow.
We found ways to have fun.
I remember.
You know, um, I, I've had the, the privilege of, of learning and working with you closely. And, you know, anytime that anybody decides to change districts and you start thinking about it, you're always kind of looking for some comfort, you're looking for some confirmation to decisions that were made. And I remember even early on in the search process, talking to Mr. Moment, saying, "Tell me about the district." And the first, the first thing that he kept saying is, "It's a great district, it's got great people." Um, and, you know, your genuine authenticity in that process really helped me. So you know what? I remember that conversation vividly. He said, "I'm gonna just wear my hat and ring, uh, and see what happens." And it was really because of the conversations that you and I had had, um, to that. And then I got here, and just your ability to introduce me to people, I mean, the welcoming, um, your friendship, and just the authentic conversation about the district. You were at a golf course when you got the call to come back. You too didn't have to come back. Um, but the love that you've had over thirty years for this place and the people who work here, um, to provide the stability, and not only that, it wasn't just the stability, it was about the stability first, and then saying, "How do we take it to the next level in such a short period of time?" And so thank you for your friendship, thank you for everything that you have, uh, taught me. And Barbara is absolutely right, you don't get those opportunities, you know, to another superintendent, um, to be able to learn and, you know, work.
You don't.
It's not a better opportunity than I have. So on behalf of the board of education, I'd like to grant you the challenge coin as well for all that you've done, just to, uh, symbolize the token appreciation upon the, on behalf of the board and the entire district. Thank you.
All right, there you go. Congratulations. All right. Um, just a lot of people that you were moving. Okay, good. Okay, anybody else? Okay. All right. All right, guys. Good job.
Well, I'll be calling.
Good job, Al.
Don't go too far.
All these goodies.
Okay, we are going to adjourn this session, and as I said earlier, we're, we're gonna go back into closed session when we come out. In about twenty minutes or so, we are not gonna report anything out. But I would like to have a, maybe a five or ten-minute break so we can say goodbye to people. And then, so first I'll accept a motion to close this session.
So move.
First from Rosie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a quorum even without Kent. And so we'll call this meeting, uh, adjourned, this part of closed session. We'll take a ten-minute break, and we'll meet back in the back room at eight-thirty. Eight-thirty. All right. Thanks. All right. Thanks. I want to give congratulations to both Kent and Rosie. Rosie, it's nice to see you back. I know you worked hard before for our students, and you will continue to do so. And Kent, I think I heard you say that you started teaching when you were twenty-eight. So you've obviously dedicated your life to VBUHSD.[1728.36]